Mindful those that wear a badge and uniform to keep us safe. We just pray you would watch over them and help them and encourage them in these times. We pray you would bless those that work for our county, those are our employees. And today in our meeting, we pray you grant us wisdom as we make decisions that apply to everyone here in Wells County. Add to this prayer, we pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is minutes. Minutes sent the email.
Most approved, this is added.
Most in the second, all favor.
Aye.
Zero. Second payroll for the year totals $230,946.81. We had a total of 145 claims in the amount of $447,684.6.
Second.
Approved, all favor.
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. Bonnie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 86 inmates for DOC, 15 RAP6. Had a lot of slide offs from accidents, but hasn't been too bad yet.
That's good.
Colds. Don't like the colds.
Stay home.
Yeah.
That's the best one.
Right. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh.
Morning.
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 As expected, just a lot in the last couple of weeks of just being out making sure things are safe, salting, plowing, so on and so forth. I believe we're still at two right of ways on 500 East left. Number three, the White Bridge, the log jam out at the White Bridge. I spoke with three different contractors about that project. It's not a typical, you know, cheap log jam, to say the least, with the land that's right, you know, with the path on one side and that retention pond. So I met with both the, all three of those and it looks like the option is going to have to get a long reach excavator and pull it from the deck, actually reach over the side to get most of it out of there. I've got, the three bids range from $6,000 to $10,000. So I'm obviously going to go with the lowest bidder if you guys are okay with that.
Absolutely.
So that's that. We're doing a lot of auditing right now in our downtime of being able to drive around the county and look at street signs. And I know in years past, we went through and did all the stop ahead signs and stop signs and some that I've noticed are due to be, or like do not pass. A lot of our curve signs that are triangle curve signs with a posted speed below it. You know, they're faded at night, there's no reflectivity to them. So this spring, right now, we're auditing them between snowstorms, we're driving and looking at those. So this spring, we're going to change out most of the do not pass signs and especially the speed signs below the curve signs. We've done curve signs here and there throughout the years, but those speed signs look to have not been replaced in several years, so we're going to, we're going to do those.
Will that be something of your traffic asset management requirement in funding for anything? I don't.
The signage usually is a lower cost item. It's got very short life cycles. Reflexivity.
But it's not required that NDOT will want it?
We do, we do identify that, we do this sort of work.
Okay.
So it's been a fairly good budget item force as part signage, it's often an accident related, the maintenance has been done.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's everything that so far that we've counted and, I mean, we have budget money for that and we're well within budget and everything. So that's why I've kind of took the initiative to get those done. Continue to clean up inside the shop, do things there. And there again, just my normal thanks to my guys for, there again, yesterday was a holiday and we were out working. So just, they continue to come through when we need them.
So far, we got about two years' worth of work and a half a year, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I think it really hasn't been that bad, but with, on the brink of two years with no snow, I think everyone kind of forgets what a real snow's like. I mean, we still, even as much as we've been out and as much as we've done, we still haven't had that six inch snow. It's two inches, three inches and.
Right.
You'd think we got six inches by some of the phone calls, but it's like, hey, remember three or four years ago and we actually did get six inches? Like, this is a dusting. I mean, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's all in perception.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion if you would allow me to, to accept the low bid on the log jam as referenced by the highway superintendent.
Second.
All right, all favor.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. You appreciate that. Dave? Dave, next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Quick update, Bridge 142, the Zanesville Bridge. We had quotes come in on Friday for the project. Obviously, what we had hoped for, but we did get three quotes from contractors out of the five requests that we submitted. The lowest responsive quote was provided by HIS Constructors out of Indianapolis. The base, the project is to be awarded based on the lowest base bid price, which their bid was for $354,437.60. There is an add alternate essentially for redecking, and that would include a thin set overlay, something we've discussed on the White Bridge. You know, when you've got a concrete deck that needs some surface work. Since we're spending such a large amount of money for rehab, I recommend that we move forward. The add alternate was for all, was very reasonable, very close to what the engineer's estimate was. And that would bring the total project cost to $419,556.60. Unfortunately, I still need to wait for some information from NDOT for that project, so I can't say, let's just send them a notice of award. But I'd like to issue a notice of intent to award to HIS contingent upon signing a contract with, with NDOT for this project overall.
So moved.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Three, zero.
And with that, can I get Blake authorized to sign any construction contracts in the interim if we're able to get the paperwork together?
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you. Update on Bridge 18, that's one of the projects we're actually already signed with HIS. Work was to have started on Monday, but with the snow, it didn't happen. And with the sub-zero temperatures this morning, it hasn't, but they should be starting this week. And that work should be completed by approximately March 14th. So the road will be closed here this week, so I just asked drivers to avoid the area. Notification should have gone out to the local media and to the schools, so they all know that it's not a travel road now because that bridge is already posted with a weight limit. So it's just mostly local traffic, so. Update on the county corridors, the south corridors project. That request for proposals has been posted in DOT's website, so I'm starting to get some contacts from consulting engineers interested in the project already. So all of their requests or their statements are due to us by February 2nd. I'm requesting a, an executive session essentially with commissioners to score those following your next commissioner's meeting. So we'll have all those in hand, so we just have to have a meeting following that to score those.
Following the next meeting?
Yeah, so following the next meeting, I'd like to have that. That allows us to score it and I can get those score sheets turned back into NDOT and we could then negotiate a contract with whoever is selected. Also, just as an FYI, I've sent the project area to NERC. They're going to do as part of our agreement with the Northeast Indian Regional Coordinating Council, they're going to do an environmental red flag analysis for us essentially for free. So that'll actually keep some of our costs down and do some of the environmental analysis for us. So that was something Dan Avery and I discussed following the council meeting, so they're going to pursue that. And I may send a number of other projects their way to do that very same red flag analysis. Essentially, you're looking for what may be a problem in the future environmentally. And then the last item I have here is Bridge 112. That's up on County Road 500 West. We discussed, and I've shown you a picture of the flooding where the water from the Eight Mile crosses over the road currently washing stone out. I need to do a hydraulic analysis of that, of the problem. Find the root problem hydraulically that's being caused by the existing bridge and what size, sort of structures. We need as far as an overflow bypass in the area. USI and, like you have a copy of their supplemental agreement, it would be, to do that hydraulic analysis, modeling an additional survey for the area, their, USI is proposing an additional fee of $29,200 for that work. Now, that's not for a full design of the system, it's all the modeling that would go into that. That would be something that I would include in the sizing of the structure. It's essentially a verification or validation of what we're proposing to do. I have some questions as to why certain modifications were done out there in the past. And I want to guarantee to the citizens of Zanesville and the Mobile Home Park that anything that we do to change out there, we're not going to increase the flooding. Essentially, it's protections for them so that our models approve what we're changing there before we try to do anything that might impact the flood plan. What I'm proposing to use is the additional funds that are not used by USI for Bridge 142. They had initially, we had signed a not to exceed agreement of $80,000. They have approximately $55,000 left over in that fee that they have not charged us. So of that, we still have more than enough to cover this expense and in fact, we're $20,000 to the good between those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Unfortunately, no other right of ways have come in, so I'll be the first for a while, so.
Just the two remaining, you need to.
Just the two remaining. And Beth could be signed and actually, I'll give you this copy, you could sign both.
Actually, all signatures are on this, I'm.
There's the other copy then. I'll sign both, I can turn one over to USI. And then Beth, if you could just scan and send me additional copy of one, you can keep the other read on, then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You got what I sent you on 500 East right of way?
I'll have to double check.
You'd asked me for some and then I.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I had a compiled list.
It was missing a couple of the digital copies from my file, so you sent me those. I didn't think. No.
I think I had two cover sheets. Mine, I had a two mile stretch, no, one mile stretch, but the recorded documents I put all together.
Yeah.
So from nine to 12 and then I tried to highlight what I had and what I didn't have.
Yeah, and it's just kind of a work in progress right now, getting everything over to Michael so that their updated right of way records show everything that we have. So we'll continue to kind of review that process. Everything I get, I print, put into a file, so. It, we're better than we were, but certainly, it's something that, kind of learning curves and the steps I got to go through to make sure the records stay where they need to be, so. No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Blake, you are next.
Good morning, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Good.
Well, it's that time of year again to renew the grant with the Department of Corrections and we emailed out the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
As in past years, the, the implementation of 1006 statute changes created the JRECC Committee, which is the general reinvestment, I forget the whole acronym, but that's where they oversee all the funding grants for DOC. County sheriffs are included, prosecutors can get grants from this, probation, community corrections. I'm trying to think who else. I don't, I think those are the entities now that are allowed to. We're still doing our, our same system as we've done in years past, as I was saying earlier to Kevin. We're not changing or adding any programming right now. We want to see, I want to see where the state's going and we want at least to have five or six years of data from the 1006 implementation. There's still a lot of things going on that we don't have a good baseline for statistic information that they're starting to finally pull together. Some of the issues that we've run into, and I'd like to thank Ms. Jacobs, my administrative assistant, and Ms. Williams, who's my education and DOC compliance person in my office, for their patience. The DOC sent us out Thursday before Christmas, a new set of documents to fill out. We had already had the grant they sent out at the beginning of December filled in and done. We had to redo everything and type it all back in because they wouldn't allow us to open the old form and migrate. Then between Christmas and New Year's, they sent us out yet another set of changes. So we have been working diligently to meet the submission date of January 31st for the grant. Unfortunately, when they make these changes, they don't give us any break on their mistakes. So we found a couple of bugs in their system, the forms that were not opening or not letting us populate. They're working on those as we speak. As you all know, dealing with the state and their forms electronically anymore can be rather precarious when they decide to start changing things last minute. So we haven't done any new programming, we're not adding any new staff. And in the packet that you had, you had our CQI, which is our Continuous Quality Improvement Plan that we're required to do, our collaboration plan with probation, the courts, sheriff's department, local law enforcement, church groups, NAA, counseling organizations. We have quite an extensive, and over the last five years, Tina and I have been working on creating a very good collaborative effort with all systems. We've been working with the RAP Committee on trying to get more services brought into Wells County. Bowen Center started two months ago, operations in Wells County. Right now, there's another counseling group that's talking with Chief Probation Officer Work about being put on the certified list of approved vendors out of Fort Wayne. So we are trying to expand that counseling need that we assessed was in dire straits because we only had the park center. And a lot of these folks that we're dealing with have either opioid addictions, methamphetamine addictions, some kind of addictions that are not the norm that we've been accustomed to in the past. These are a lot more intense and unfortunately, more devastating to the family unit than we've ever seen in our history of doing this. So we are working on that and working with the church groups to try to bring in support services for those folks and their family members as we go through this process. There is our SWOT analysis, which we assess every year, strengths, weaknesses, and areas where we can improve how we're doing. We do our benchmarks for where we're at for the state and making sure that we're staying on course and achieving the things that we need to do. Compared to what it was in 1990 when I first started, these are things I learned at Hillsdale doing business. I'm glad to see the state's finally adopting a lot of these practices. I think it's giving a better product to the communities and to you as commissioners, since we're your agents, in trying to implement the best, safest, and most comprehensive system we can do locally.
Where do you see recidivism at right now?
Recidivism's one issue I always take with the state. How do you peg recidivism with addictions? You know, you're never, you're never cured. That's the first thing when you talk to a counselor or you talk to a doctor, you're always going to be addicted. The question is, are you in.
Trouble with the law because of it.
Right. Or are you in remission from the use? That's, that's the thing, and that's what's complicating because the state has argued this and they've been working on trying to get recidivism modeled, they still are. This is like the white rhino that you're trying to find in the wild.
When I came on and six years later, that was my whole thing, are we treating and re-treating and.
Yeah. And that's the problem with recidivism, there's so many moving variables, you can't get a baseline. And that's the frustrating thing to me, in 20, 28 years of doing this now, we've looked at everything. We've looked at, okay, do you track it for three years after they've been in the criminal justice system? Unfortunately, with our nomadic society, these folks and their constitutional provisions, once they're finished with their sentence, we really can't force them to keep us informed. Our, our time ends at the end of the executive session.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is whether they come back into your system again.
Yeah, the legal part of it.
And DOC is working on that formula right now. I think they're getting close. A lot of this is going to be the data collection piece, which we are going to be a pilot counting for the SRS system that's going to be mandated in 2020. That's something that I'm hoping with them consolidating and doing better data collection themselves. The one thing we ran into in the past, Blake, is the state was collecting all this information, but they had no idea what they were wanting to collect. So they had all this data, these data points, but yet, no one was doing it, there was no consistency from county to county of how they were reporting. And that was the problem because the state didn't tell, just until this last year, when they passed the, this last July, when they passed the statistical information gathering and standardization statute for all entities, sheriff's department, probation, courts, prosecutor. So we're all doing apples to apples instead of, well, they do this kind of calculation and look at the data points from this set.
Right.
These guys are doing this, we're doing this. It wasn't meshy. And that, that's been where the recidivism model is broken down every time. So I'm hoping within the next couple of years, they stick to their guns, they keep everybody on track, and we can start getting a beat on it.
That's good enough.
You know, I, I can't give you a number right now because we haven't seen any hard numbers, but that's.
Keep us posted with that.
Will do.
Appreciate it. Okay. You need something signed, all of us or just one of us?
All of you, please.
Motion.
Motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
And while you're saying that, one thing that we've been working with Representative Matt Lehman on is Article 12, which establishes the Administrative Operations Community Corrections was done in 1988. There was some outdated terminology in what a court order for home detention could include. They still refer to landlines.
Okay.
They didn't have cell lines or GPS in there. Just some outdated stuff that conflicts with the 1006 statutes. So Matt Lehman's been very helpful. He worked with Judge Antrim, Judge Miller, Colin Anderson, prosecutor, and myself on putting a bill in. So I just want to thank him for his timing up on that because that is really going to, I think, clear up some things and allow us to address more of these low level misdemeanors and try to keep them out of county jail. Thank you.
Thank you for staying on top of everything, Blake.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roger's next.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Just a few things that we've been working on. One of the big things is the network upgrades that were approved for our budget. We have started purchasing equipment and we've started with some of the infrastructure fiber upgrades and getting a fiber connected to the jail is something that, at first, we weren't really planning on, but here recently, we decided that was going to be something that was going to be really helpful. So we started looking at that a little closer and Adams Wells has been able to show us how that connection will be fairly inexpensive and will actually fit into our budget. So work has already started on that. We helped with the 4D initiative to go paperless. We had to just, we didn't have to add a new physical server because of some past purchases we made and all of our new servers are virtual servers anyway, so it was just a matter of loading it up and spinning it up. We have been busy lately too with the auditors and assessors offices, getting their carpet replaced and making sure that everything's up and running. The assessor's office is up, fully running. The auditor's office is, is up and running as well as they need, they act to be.
We got a phone.
Well, their office was not a complete tear out because they're the back office where Lisa McCormick is and.
Yeah, we still have a couple of stations.
Yeah, they, they didn't have to tear out any carpet in there, so. But we've been helping getting, you know, making sure computers are where they need to be and unplugged and everything runs smooth there. And we've been busy with a few new computer upgrades in some different offices, so. That's just, and planning for, you know, all the implementation this year of, of things that we budgeted for, so.
You and Dave keep up the good work.
We're, we're trying to, trying to keep up.
You're doing well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Roger.
I don't know where Dick is at, but he's got a company because we got to sign the interest. Mike Lotteheiser has an item that he needs to bring before you also, so if you want to.
Do you want to call?
Go before him.
Mr. Randall first.
Was he here?
Do you want to call him, like make sure he's aware?
I don't have his number right now.
I have my office calling. Yes. Let me just.
That way if he's not aware for some reason, we can send it here.
Sure if I have Richard Randall or. General insurance. Yeah, I don't have it saved that way, so.
Number for general insurance?
I've got it.
Well, we see you at the commissioner meeting.
Question.
Soon. Smiley face.
In other words, you're on right now.
Mike, you're up.
Good morning. At least this time it's not me.
You have to do that last time, isn't it?
Yeah. All right, so to kind of walk through where we're at with the buyout program for two homes in Bearcruz. We got to do some formality things first with you guys. So the first thing I would ask for you as the commissioners to do is to authorize both Kent Sprunger and Joe Wetrick to provide the appraisals for the two properties.
Okay, let's go through the whole scenario because I called him and kind of went through the whole situation of where we are with them. He emailed us the appraisals.
Yep.
Then we also have what is the assessed value on the GIS.
Yep.
And then we have the numbers that he presented to us last meeting.
Yep.
Out of those numbers, we have a commitment from the Wells County Foundation to go up to $10,000 for both purchases or each purchase?
Up to, for both. It's $10,000.
$10,000.
Total.
Total.
Yeah.
And then we have 75%.
Five thousand from Bearcruz.
And then 75% of the remaining.
From FEMA.
From FEMA.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So we ourselves can either choose to pick up the difference or the difference and we could add a dollar amount or a percentage to that. And that's kind of where we're at, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's the simple part. We just have to run through matching Indiana code with what we need to follow through. It was something that was brought to our attention, Roy has been helping, trying to get some stuff done from what you guys need to do. So the first thing you need to do is to make the appraisals official, that you need to authorize getting the appraisals from the two people and then I will formally give them to you.
Okay.
Motion to accept those two appraisers as official appraisers for this project and their appraisals.
Second.
Favor.
Zero. All right.
Here they are. All right, so that gets to, so from here on, the commissioner's duty would be to review the appraisals and then pass them along to the county council just for their information. They don't have to do anything with them, they just seem to have the copies of them and they need to keep those for five years, at least the statute states. So with that, it would be the question, and what we had talked about prior was the amount and how they, how the budget and all that stuff was working out. That's where we came up with the two buyout numbers that we presented a lot of the, late last year, when we created everything else, so.
So at what time will we actually give them a chance to make an offer, to accept or reject?
So what, so what will happen is as soon as we have, after. So what will happen is as soon as we have, after today's meeting, we'll have the authorization enough to make those, to finish up the offers, the purchase. We basically have, Roy and I have been working on those, so they're basically done now. Unless if you would like to adjust the number that would be offered, I mean, that's a discussion. Otherwise, we'll just follow right with-
Are the two numbers that you or we had last meeting, I think it was?
Yep.
Are they in this packet of information?
They are in-
In this packet of information.
They were in-
These are strictly email.
Right.
I thought we already agreed we were going to stick with that number in the light up between the two.
Well, there was two separate.
Yeah, and so the numbers-
Two separate numbers. That one?
Yep, that one and that one, the corresponding property.
Can we use a calculator or a spreadsheet to see?
And realizing that's not the entire budget for the buyout, that's just the official amount for the purchase of the properties. There's more expenses involved.
Expenses, county-related expenses?
Yeah, I mean, overall, there's the, from the beginning, there's the cost of getting the appraisals, there's the cost of getting the title report, there's the cost of getting the environmental assessment done, there's the cost for demolition, and there's the cost for purchasing the properties. All of those combined to make the budget. Now, the purchase of the property is 75% of the budget. It's the biggest piece. There's a $10,000 and $5,000 line item for the legal and stuff that has to be done for purchasing property, as well as for the demolition.
And the numbers we left there were what we originally had calculated.
The numbers, yeah, that you're looking at there, that is the most that we could give based on the budget.
To do both of them?
Yes.
So this is the total, subtract the 15 from the foundation, where you can do this, minus 75% of the remaining, the seamless portion. Basically, and then you estimated of that, five for each one or 10 for each one for the demolition and the demolition?
There's, well, there's, it's $10,000 for property demolition and $5,5500, I believe, in legal costs for both properties. It's about $1,500 or so, or $15,000 or so in those.
Okay.
So there's more than that, unless it's a-
Our cost.
Do we want to make that official?
Official.
Yes, official or make it-
I don't want to make it official, I can help it.
So if you're ready with that, I'll undertake a motion to proceed.
Motion to proceed as is.
All right.
Second.
As things happen, we've got one quote, I'm looking at getting another quote for environmental assessments, which will be the next active thing to do if they accept the offers. So the process will go giving offers, and then if they accept the offer, then we will do, we'll run environmental, and then if environmental passes, then we will take titles that are, or go through the process of closing on the properties, and then do the demolition, which we have bids on right now as well.
What's this an appraisal of?
Those are the, yeah.
I just see one.
They're spread out, all four of them are out here.
I think you have the other options.
Yep, yep. Yeah, all four of the appraisals.
Two, nine, one, one.
Yeah, and Joe Wetrick. Yep, yep, yep.
I got Joe's.
Yep. So if that, unless there's any other questions, otherwise we'll give you guys updates as it progresses.
Mike asked me when I was at Tuesday's city, or county council meeting in regards to the commitment for dollars for the plaza and the stair replacement repair that we formally announced that we will go up to $350,000 for those repairs. One was $125,000 for the plaza portion and up to, we had estimated $185,000 and $225,000. So using the high number, $225,000 and $125,000 is $350,000. So if, just make that public as announcement, I don't know, do we need a motion to spend that money at this point, or just if we're just committing to it?
Oh, well, that's all because it's just on your budget, it'll be in there.
Right.
But did you say $350,000?
$350,000 total.
Okay.
The county contributing to the county portion of the property.
Yep.
Is that repairing the stairs or making the entrance to the center part?
Both.
It would repair that and the outside plaza and the new stairs.
Taking the central part out, making the entrance, making sure the stairs are safe on the side.
Is there any problem with the state on changing that?
Those, we've had them addressed.
You've already gone through that issue?
We went through historical society and locally in the fire marshal. The only side we have upstairs coming down on the sides because of the door access.
And then is it on the national?
No.
Historical register?
No.
No issues on that.
That was verified. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You ready already?
Uh, yeah.
We were looking for you.
You are.
If you want to bring it up.
You're just pulling a chair up there.
Pulling a chair up there.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, it would be.
Nice, got the memo for the same blazer, huh? Nice. Nice. Jeez. I almost brought the grizzly today. Actually, the grizzly is in the car.
It's really nice right now.
He's been for a key scene. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's all we live for.
I'm good, how are you?
Well, I'm good.
All right.
Yes, I'm just pretty busy.
Gonna have a style lesson on the end of it.
We're gonna put your phone number in our cell phone.
Thank you.
What we have before you right now is the potential workman's compensation renewal for the coming year beginning February 1st. And I will compliment the state of Indiana, they did something nice, not only for Wells County, but for a lot of municipalities. The item laying before you is the proposal, and the second page is the index, but I think one of the most important pages is the third page. That's a comparison or a scan of last year's premium, this year's premium, as well as the payroll. We used, I believe, the last audited payroll number of 5.4 million. And each of the classifications are listed with those payrolls listed to the very right side of that document. And then below, I will bring up one comment. You will see Experience MOD 1.02. You find that at the bottom left-hand. Okay, that represents our modification or increase in premium because of potential or claims of two years ago. And in my 30-plus years of representing Wells County, this is the first time that we've seen it go over 1.00. The expiring, I believe, was .93, which says basically that was a 7% decrease. Okay, so the potential premium there for the renewal is $75,733, and the total discount, the company is discounting this by $17,534. So I'm always happy at least to say the insurance company is participating because of our history with Bliss McKnight people, bituminous and governmental insurance. The fourth page tells you the Christmas gift that the state of Indiana, the State of the Compensation Bureau, has bestowed upon public entities. What I've done is take the various codes of, for example, streets and roads, the code on that, which determines the rate, is 5506, see what the expiring premium or the expiring per $100 hours of payroll, and then look what the renewal is. So I believe every one of those is less, they might be one exception to that, I don't know what it was, but-
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Volunteers. Now, again, that's on the policy, but if we are utilizing volunteers, it is imperative that we be contacted before that potential volunteer, volunteers pick up trash along the roads or whatever, because we'll need to advise the insurance company on that. And again, at the very bottom, you see the modification, .93 tells us that that was a 7% decrease, where we're looking at a 2% increase on the renewal. And we've already, I think we've already potentially sent premium notices out to the county, but page five gives a breakdown of those premiums. There's the highway, general fund, so forth, so you're looking at an increase of approximately $2,085 over the expiring premium, where that represents a potential 2.9, 90% increase in premiums. And I'm, we keep it under 3% or 4%, I'm tickled to death with that. The balance of the, is the actual policy or quote proposal. It basically provides some of the same documentation that I've already presented to you. The last few pages are claims activities during the past three years, I believe is in there. Just for your review, it would give the amount paid, the reserve, the loss, and so forth. And again, whether we use Bliss McKnight or whether we use X number company, that factor of 1.02 is something that any company would potentially use for the renewal. But the claims activity is something I think that you need to take a look at. It's not, it has not been a case or a problem with Wells County, but in my 87 years, one of the worst claims that we had was a public entity, and it was a very catastrophic claim. And I think most of you are aware of it, it was a public entity that had that happen.
So you're looking at premium $75,733?
That is correct. Now, there's an error in there of how much, Dan?
We were, it's like the third page here, it's a favorable comparison.
We were off like 27 dollars?
Yeah, I mean, when you add all of that up, I advised Dick that it didn't add up to the actual premium, and it's actually lower than what the-
On page three?
Yeah.
And that's just on the estimated payroll, correct?
Right, he said, he says in his review it's $75,733, which is correct, but when you actually add all those numbers up, you're going to come up with $75,756. So I think what happened is the miscellaneous was just off a little bit, so if you're a numbers guy like me, you'll catch that. So, but $75,733 is the renewing premium, so it's actually less than when you add those numbers up, so that's always good.
Yeah.
But I just thought I'd point that out. And again, I think it's the miscellaneous where it says 1305, I think we're off a little bit there, but I think it says 20 some dollars, $23.
But we've got it noted correctly, so.
Right, I just want to make sure, if you guys want to add it up like I did, and it doesn't add up, that it is $75,733, it is the premium.
Okay.
And the 1.0, I'll add, 1.02, even though you guys have a history of being over 1.00, that's not horrible. I mean, we've got some businesses that are far over 1.2, where it's like a 20% surcharge. I think what Dick's saying is we just need to keep an eye on some of the safety issues because that can creep up, and they look back the last three years on workers' comp. So when you look at the claims, I think most of, there isn't any recent activity, is there?
No, no.
So I mean, most of that stuff should be, should, that's why it went from 1.93 to 1.0. So I don't, I mean, I don't see it as a huge concern, but I mean, we just don't want that trickle enough to 1.25 and 1.3, and then that additional $1,700 ends up being 15, 20 grand, so.
And that changes every year.
Right.
It changes every year.
And everybody that comes in and quotes it's going to have to use that same mod factor, so.
Right.
It's the state. I don't think it's horrible, but you just want to keep an eye on, you know, anything-
It's important all the department heads push that safety.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and over the years, it's been great. I mean, it's, anything under 1.00 is very good, and all the departments need to be applauded for that. But when we start getting over 1.00, you just, we just need to keep, make sure that all the departments are practicing their safety and everything like that, so. And if you need help or whatever, I think we can also do loss control. The work comp people can come in and actually, if the various departments need assistance or help in certain training aspects, I think we can even use that, you know, to your advantage as well, if that's needed. If we get to a point where we really get concerned and you guys want to take some action and get ahead of it, so. But I mean, all you got to do is let us know, we can see about getting that done.
So if we're, if the county's always managed, the district is having a hazmat day, and they're going to have volunteers helping, you need a list before the event?
Yes, yes.
Is that sometimes tough to do when you don't know who's going to show up to work? I mean, worth your recommendation.
I mean, whether you've got five names or 10 names listed, if a volunteer shows up after the fact, it's, you still have an applicable situation, you don't have to necessarily nail that right down to the final name on that. Now, it's different with some companies. The volunteer situation up until a few years ago was something that we could not even do. The state of Indiana has allowed that here the last few years, and some companies make up a minimal charge of $1,000, will cover maybe 10 volunteers unnamed.
Okay.
So, but we should be notified of that accordingly if there is a volunteer group that may be cleaning a ditch along county road or something of that nature.
Currently, the policy is rating for zero volunteers right now, so there's no surcharge right now for any volunteers at this point, so.
Flexion board workers, are they volunteers?
Are they paid? Did they receive anything?
Yeah, they're paid.
They are paid.
I wouldn't think they're volunteers if they're reimbursed.
If they're paid, I will check that to make sure, and I will also advise the company that we potentially may make a small charge for any situation that may come up during the course of the year. I serve at your direction on that.
I mean, a rainy day, slip falls, a fall out in the-
Well, the difference between a volunteer doing some work versus somebody of a public nature that simply has a problem at the courthouse or one county property, that's a different situation, so that's a general liability or a premises med case there.
We'll address your answers, we'll find out if you want the questions. My understanding of those is if there's any reimbursement, then I don't think they're considered volunteers, but we'll get some information to go back to you on that. And we'll let you know in the due steps, too, when volunteers are used and you don't know exactly who's showing up, we'll see if we can get a little guidance on that for you guys as well, and we'll get some of the answers for the questions.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion to accept the $75,733 premium.
Good.
Aye.
I think there's also, we're going to go over a little bit of cyber liability, too.
We don't need that, do we? Come on, really?
Well-
Roger, come on, Roger.
Roger. I'm glad you're here, Roger.
Where's Roger?
Hi, Roger.
Roger? You're talking to an ill-literate when it calls a cop. I'm not afraid to, no.
Well, Roger can probably attest to being more of a concern nowadays.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible that you have saved money if there was a major breach. I mean, as hard as we tried, nothing's perfect, but...
Cyber liability? That price is too high.
I agree.
And you don't even wanna cover it, do you?
I don't even care. I've watched these guys come in and hold people hostage. I think they held Madison County hostage down at Anderson.
Stark County just bought a policy a year ago. And we've explored every possibility, and it's a new form of coverage. It's something that continually changes, something that is a potential problem for municipalities, governmental agencies, companies, corporations, attorneys. You have an awful lot of private information.
They got internet in Knox, huh?
Yeah, really. But the Chubb ACE people are working with Bliss McKnight. They are exploring bringing a potential policy out, specially designed for public entities. So what you see here is something that's offered to corporations, companies, private business, and so forth. It's very confusing. The first page is a full-blown claims-made cyber enterprise risk management policy, $9,476. The minimum earned premium is $6,000. In other words, let's assume that for one reason or another, six weeks from now, you accept the policy, and six months from now, you cancel it. $6,000 is the minimum earned premium. The pages that follow that, two, three, give you some basic information, but in, there's also page four, offers to the potential client, various loss control, risk management topics that can be covered by the policy. But it has nothing to do with the cost of the policy. You're basically buying information and potential risk management people coming in, going through the computer, going through your programs, talking to your various heads about what is needed, what is not needed, how to protect yourself from hacking and so forth. Now, at the very, at the very back, you'll find a little two-page agreement, ACE Privacy Protection. That gives you a basic understanding of what it covers and what it doesn't. But what I wanted you to do, for example, the privacy liability is $3,000 a year. The data breach fund is $800 a year, and the network security is $1,700 a year. There's also network extortion. You're somewhat familiar with that. That's $550. But again, I think what I would recommend, I provided Beth with the entire policy, exclusions, limitations, and so forth, I would turn that over to your IT people and let them make a decision as to what is necessary and what is not necessary. We're not experts.
That's what I was gonna suggest, Dick, is Roger, I apologize, but for the sake of somebody knowing a lot more than the rest of us, if you would...
Review it?
Review it with some recommendations, I think we would probably appreciate that greatly.
Yeah, and the 90-some hundred dollars, that's very extensive, and that includes a lot of the coverages that you may not need. But there are some key, I think the network extortion, I don't know, depending on whether they have a backup, like a cloud backup, because I can tell you, I have friends in Henry Lake, too, where they can get in and guess your password, and they can hold your stuff and hold hands on them. And it's going around, it's going around to businesses, it's going around to municipalities, and if you're not paying attention to it, and they demand like $12,000 to $10,000 to get your information back. And now, some companies, businesses have, you know, they've avoided having to pay the extortion fee because they have a cloud backup. But if you don't have proper backup, then you may need to have this extortion coverage. And then the other thing is that sometimes it's a large deductible or retention, to which place it makes no sense in paying, you know, thousands of dollars for coverage when you have a $25,000 deductible or retention.
Right.
Because I haven't heard of too many extortion requests that are over 10 to 12 to 15 grand. So it's very complex, and he's probably gonna need to be, all he wanted to do is offer it, because it is, it's an ongoing concern, but we aren't, we're not specialists, just like, you know, you guys probably aren't specialists on all kinds of IT. I certainly am not, so...
So I'll just go ahead and refer this to our IT.
The one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, Stark County is about the same size as Wells County. They carry the privacy liability, the data breach fund, the network security, and their premium is about $5,000. And that is with the same carrier.
Cool.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent.
So you need signature?
Do you want pardon?
You need signature on the premium?
Does Beth have that afforded, if we need a signature?
I think I signed it before.
The only thing that I wanted to bring up, basically, is I received a call regarding the Wells County Regional Sewer District. Is anybody familiar with that?
Me.
Okay, the premium on this, when it was canceled back on March 2nd, 2013, was like $600. It's approximately $31 or $32 today. But due to the fact that it's rated on classifications governmental subdivisions, not state or local based on population, also sewers, the total. And because it is a separate entity, based on my understanding, we don't have to comply with the IC codes of $5 million for the liability, and this was written on a one-day basis. And if you want me to proceed and provide a formal proposal, I will do so.
We will, you know.
Okay.
Roy will, one of us will contact you.
I have nothing further. I thank you. I've served Wells County for more than 30 years, and I appreciate the loyalty, and we do our very best to look after the various entities and commissioners and so forth. And one thing I failed to do, this gentleman sent to my left here, had joined our firm this past year, and his name is somewhat familiar, maybe Brett Beer.
Hello?
I think you worked with his dad.
So when they say you're bringing beer, it's him.
We know, not a lot goes on at the office, but yeah.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
We're getting him up in train, so we're trying to bring our median age down a little bit, so. Dick really hears that right now, but...
Kevin, I've got a fundraiser tomorrow on net ties for these guys, and if you listen to me, you'll be...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
I was, I'll just bring it up. Engineering Resources contact me, like to present a rendering or a drawing, and wanted to know of what we committed to the plaza project, $3,500. Bring us two or three options of what the north entrance would look like. Do you want to spend that now or at a future time? Or not at all?
Is that included in our 350 we were thinking about spending?
That would be a deducted down, yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
An idea we should expect.
Are they actually giving us options, or are they just gonna draw it?
They're gonna give us options, so we have a say in it. Is that all right?
$3,500. I think we have to have something to even start to look at. I have no clue what they're, I mean, I know we have to do something with it, but to get some ideas on the new facade structure, I think we need to start somewhere.
What's the name of the company?
Engineering Resources.
And that's who's actually going to do the project?
Correct. They're the ones that gave us the project.
That's the company that brought the house, partner, but...
The whole thing.
And the other thing Mark wants us to do is, as their project happens, it's done in munison, that we don't do one project, and another one has a different contractor. We'll get it done one time. So, because whatever they do westward, they can all pair it up together, pour concrete together, and get some...
Will they be able to do it at the same time we might need to get ours done?
That's the whole thing, yeah.
We don't wanna wait on that. We don't wanna be in the middle. Now is not ready to go.
Right. So we assume this stuff is gonna be happening this summer, possibly? As long as we know it's in the pipeline and it's gonna happen, okay.
At least the stair part needs to be done, whether they do the plaza part yet or not.
Right. That definitely can be done, but we just have to make sure we have an entrance into the building and a fire way out.
The same contractor might not be able to do both things, because once will be a general listing contractor, you don't have, that could do work on both ends, but you don't have somebody specializing in buildings, and then you have somebody specializing in plotting. Necessarily, they may not be the same people.
Would we have one general overseeing the whole thing, or no?
Probably just Engineering Resources.
Okay.
Which is this guy?
Yes.
As a project manager, maybe?
Yeah. And just so you guys know, when the engineering costs for the courthouse portion of the plaza is discounted by 50% by resources, which is why we record that thing on the CRB.
Okay.
Thank you.
Beth, what else do you have for us?
I have...
Oh. Motion, second, you've already got that down.
I made a motion.
You made a motion to accept that, and Kami seconded it. Okay, the second meeting of the month of January of each year, the commissioners are given a report of all the expenditures. Basically, it's our conversation of all of our employees for the year, the prior year, and this is one thing that we do advertise and post, it should be going in the paper, but it's already been in, but that is done the second meeting of January of every year, so you need to make an actuarial statement that you have reviewed that, and I sent it to you by email. And then you did it. Okay.
I would acknowledge that.
Okay, and the other thing I have is we have got a joint appointment that we do for the Huntington City Township Library, and that board appointment is being renewed. James Miller, he is on the board, and he would like to continue with that, and the commissioners of Huntington County have approved that, so now we need Blake to sign this, if you so act, to approve him also to turn on the motion to approve.
Second. We've got legislative coming up in Indianapolis the end of the month. I'll be attending that. Chance to meet up with the legislator and chat.
That's the week, today and Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
I don't have anything else, Roy?
Were you reviewing the buyout figures? You're pointing at spreadsheets, but didn't I state any of the figures? Can you release those?
I heard we're not, so many salespeople are looking at options, I've seen that news.
The property owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, it's private numbers until we open.
Okay. All right, now I'll flip it open. Anybody else in the audience have any questions? When you're done, I will entertain a question to adjourn.
Questions adjourn.
Some of them.
You are done. Appreciate it, and thank you.